Now, the council and mayor of October 8th, 2024 is Pastor Booker. He's out there. Ask him to say our prayer and then we'll go with the pledge of allegiance.
It's not about colleagues in some matters.
Go ahead. Stole over Brad.
As we pray on behalf of our city, Father in heaven, we come with sincerity and with hearts of gratitude and thanksgiving. We thank you for life. We thank you for the benefit of enjoying the things that you provide for us to enjoy. I come now to pray for our mayor, the council of his constituents. I pray for our city and the climate that our city might be a better place to provide a decent and a safe environment. Bless all that will engage in this meeting tonight. Help us to be law-abiding citizens. And God, one day, when meeting days down here come to an end, help us to be prepared to go home to a better place that you're going to prepare for us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the choir at United States of America and to the revival and ecumenics, one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as we call on all. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Booker. Oh, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting held on September 24th, 2024. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, a same. Passes unanimously. No employee recognition? Get down to the public hearings. What we all here for, right? We got a public hearing to modify zoning classifications in which packaged stores are a permitted use. Yeah. You got any comments on that? Just kind of set it up.
Publicly advertised. It looked like anything else was fine.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this public hearing on packaged stores? If not, I'll consider this public hearing closed. A public hearing to rezone 2.2 acres on William Street from CPGI to TNR.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, same house. The boys call here as they're probably ever done. Does it take any comments at this time?
Do I have anyone in the audience that wants to speak for or against this rezone? I consider this public hearing closed also. Now, we had our hearing for short-term rental ordinance.
So, Mayor, we'd asked Mark Costo to give us a brief summary of the ordinance.
Okay. I'm gonna save Costo's comments to the end. And we've been properly advertised. Everything's.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Anyone in the audience that wants to speak against the public hearing for short-term rental ordinance? Come up and just state your name.
Hi, my name's Elliot Lamb. Currently, I have a short-term rental that's 30 feet from my backyard. I have a 10-year-old daughter and a 6-year-old son. It's really affected us and how we do things. The reason we purchased the house that we're in was because we wanted to focus on family. We love the location. We had a great backyard for our kids to play in and be outside. There've been numerous occasions where we've actually had to bring the kids in because of partying, well, overuse of alcohol, and the smell of drugs throughout our backyard that we can smell. There's been many a times that kids have come out on the dock there at that house, been unsupervised. I've had to look at my wife and said, "One of us is about to have to jump in this water if these four kids go in." And they were all under the age of six years old. Pretty scary when it's happening right here. Two kids playing in the backyard. Last thing I don't like is to see something like that happen. Again, unsupervised kids. I've had adults passed out on the dock from overuse of alcohol the next morning. I have a security camera down there. They can clearly see them laid out in the middle of the dock. It was passed out. They roll over in the middle of the night. What happens? Again, I have somebody floating in my backyard. And I have two small kids I have to look at each week. There've been many a times that my kids have been woken up during school nights because the noise was so much. I personally have had to call the Grand City Police and ask on multiple occasions for them to go there and ask them to please be quiet because I have kids trying to go to sleep for school. The one that I'm currently talking about is probably less than 500 feet from a school zone. What kind of background check is being done for people who rent these short-term rentals? As far as I know, none. This house sits 20 feet off the thread. Kids walk that thread every day. Again, what kind of background checks are being done for the people who rent these houses? Again, as far as I know, none, which scares the absolute hell out of me. This is a great small town. I love it. I grew up here. Some of y'all know me or know my parents. It's where I love it to be. And I'm very passionate about this because, again, I don't want my kids sick of this. Very disturbing that we don't know what we're coming home to each day. Again, there was one time where it was in the paper a couple of months back that police were called. Somebody was actually injured. Somebody was hurt. This is all stones thrown from my house. Put yourself in my shoes with two small kids. Would you want to have to deal with this every night? I don't. But I absolutely love where we are. I love being involved with all my kids' stuff. And that's why we chose where we were and where we are. So I just ask y'all that for the future. Take some of my experiences to heart. It's nothing that I want anybody to have to deal with in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else want to speak? Let me get him. He's up. Come back to you, sir. He'll be on his side.
Councilman, hey. Just tell my name's speaking. Yes, my name is Bob Johnson. I'm on 882 Piney Woods Drive. I retired from LaGrange five years ago. I really like it here. I'm staying. My comments are informed by, you know, my background education. I was in finance and banking for 38 years. Half of that was CEO of a publicly traded company. So I think I've got a little bit of background to speak to this. I have read the city's proposed ordinance, LaGrange's comprehensive plan. I've read a lot of the current ordinance, the property elements of that. Looked at websites on how to create an STR business. If you want your eyes open, look at some of those. And I've read numerous articles on communities that are now amending their short-term rental ordinances that they might have made a decade ago. Many cities, as I said, are now amending their prior ordinances, which they made back then thinking that STRs were great and they wanted to facilitate the process of them establishing in their city. The clear direction today is to tighten up and to eliminate short-term rentals, particularly in the residential zones, in the deep residential zones. It's clear just from sort of reading the literature that we should be playing it slow, that we should be resting on our current zoning ordinances rather than changing them. And we should pay attention to what's happening elsewhere. It does not appear that we're doing that. It appears we're going very quickly. Shifting to the ordinance, I object to just one paragraph. That's paragraph, section 30-5-377A. And that is the definition of the zoning districts where short-term rentals will be allowed. Four lines. Four lines. A single paragraph allows unrestricted operation of short-term rentals of every stripe, including corporate profit-seeking entities throughout most of the city's residential zones. This is bad public policy, as other cities have learned or are learning. Neighbors are gonna hate it when a money fund buys the house next door and converts it to a short-term rental. You can count on that. And we're gonna all hate it when potential new residents are crowded out and can't buy a house they can afford.
Let me, yeah, these were concerned. What was that section again?
Section 30-5-377. It's right there at the front. First page. It goes from page, one page to the next. And so it includes all the different zones that short-term rentals are proposed to be allowed. Okay. So let's go to section 30-5-377A and let's call it by what it really is. It's a zoning change, all in caps. This is or should be a very big deal with full disclosure, progression through all the committees, and its own day in the sun. I attended all the meetings since August, all the work sessions. Never heard the words zoning change used. I believe that most of the city's homeowners are unaware that this ordinance is advancing a very significant zoning change in our residential zones. I have a few rhetorical questions. So why does this proposed ordinance have such a sense of urgency? Why do we have to do it right now? Why have we not more directly informed citizens of the proposed zoning changes? We have numerous short-term rentals already operating in the city. Has code enforcement investigated any of these? Have they come to any conclusions of whether they're non-conforming or conforming? Have we had any special use permit hearings on those non-conformities? Is legalizing non-conforming land uses of a dozen property owners worth breaking promises made in the zoning over decades to thousands, thousands of homeowners? Is it worth that? So that's what we're doing. Rezoning this section could hardly be more detrimental to established and traditional residential neighborhoods or more favorable to short-term rental investors. And cities are finding that once these short-term rentals are legalized and entrenched, it's very difficult to go back. There should be very strong public policy reasons for enacting such a jarring change to our zoning districts just to legalize a few short-term rentals operating without affirmative. To my knowledge, public policy arguments have not been made, or at least not publicly. The proposed ordinance is a trap. It's like a Trojan horse. It's holding a nasty surprise. It would be a terrible blunder to let this into the gates of our city. Mr. Mayor, council members, let's pump these brakes. This is a quality-of-life issue. Strip this ordinance down. Include only what we need now. And I believe that is to register the existing short-term rentals. Probably give them some kind of a license, maybe a provisional license of some sort. Put some enforcement rules in place and start collecting your hotel tax. Please, let's not fall into the trap of legalizing short-term rentals in residential zones. It's a box you can't get out of. We have time to study what other cities are doing to see how the legal challenges that are out there right now and that the cities are losing as they go back and try to reclaim zoning ordinances that they pushed aside. We can wait. We can see how those things are decided. Let's make a plan. We can make a plan that works for the city in a thoughtful and targeted way. But for now, we have zoning ordinances. We should rest on them. They've served us well. UDO provides a process, a special use permit to legally decide non-conforming land uses with direct citizen input. Mr. Mayor, put it to work. Thanks to the council for wrestling with this. I know it's not easy. Proponents have tried to paint this as a one-off, unruly house that regulations are gonna fix. That's not true. The party house is just a red herring. It's a red herring for their true agenda, which is a free pass to continue their operations, which are currently not permissible, and to exploit further our strongest neighborhoods. This risks the character of our neighborhoods. It's one of our greatest, city's greatest assets. We need to get this right. We got one chance to get it right. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. This gentleman over here on.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Danny Guy, 630 Country Club Road. I know many of you, but not all of you on the council. First, I'd like to simply endorse what Mr. Lamb, Mr. Johnson, just told you. This is a big issue if you live where I do. I share a property boundary with this rental that Mr. Lamb described. It was very disruptive right from the get-go. I personally had to call the police because of the noise was so great when I came down the road. I could hear it before I got to my house. There were cars parked on the thread. I don't think there's any cars allowed on the thread. That in itself is a violation. There were cars up and down the street. There were cars up and down Piney Woods Drive. There was a car blocking the driveway to Ms. Pippin's parents' house. And there was a truck coming into my driveway. And when I put up my hand for them to stop because they were looking for a place to park, they drove right into my hand and then told me to take my goddamn hand off the hood of their truck and threatened me. Hours later, after the police had been back two more times, including the chief, there was, my neighbor on the other side, Baron Wood, was assaulted and had to go to the hospital. And I'm sure you're aware of all this. Since that time, we've not had such an issue with that many people, but we've had more than the, I would question that seven bedrooms are over there. They're calling seven bedrooms, but on many occasions, there've been well in excess of seven cars parked out there. And then a week or two ago, there was a trailer pulled up in there and they were unloading chairs to take into the backyard for a big event. On the VRBO website, it's listed as no parties or events. But there's no supervision of this place by the owner and operator of the VRBO, none. We called him that night. My wife texted him several times before we called the police. And he never came over. He never took ownership of the problem. And I think, as has already been pointed out, this is the tip of the iceberg. You're gonna have people that are not gonna abide by the 24/7, one-hour notice that is listed in your new ordinance. It's impractical. And it also states in that the owner's not supposed to be a peace officer, nor are the neighbors supposed to be a peace officer. But you're putting me in that position. And I've already been threatened by somebody that's not from LaGrange. And what I told him is on private property, squealed tires, went up the street, and then came back and parked. I don't think that's right. And in my neighborhood, I've lived in my house 35 years. And two times have the police had to come to that neighborhood. And both were for burglaries. Went across the street from my house and at my house. And now I've got an unknown group of people there frequently, almost every weekend. I don't know who they are. And they are probably fine for the most part, but they're not always fine. And what happened that night of the event was kids attending that party just put out a broadcast and kids from all over, from Valley to Roanoke, were coming over there to this place. How do you control that? Why are we taking a residential area and turning it into a retail area? It's illogical. It would be illogical next to your house, your house, and your house. If I wanted to live next to a hotel, I would live next to a hotel. And while we're talking about hotels and motels, and I noticed in the ordinance there's gonna be a tax, are you gonna hold these owners to the same standard as a hotel? At my office, I have a sprinkler system. I serve the public. Hotels have a sprinkler system. The fire marshal indicates these might need a sprinkler system to be in compliance. One room next door has one mode of egress, two beds, a utility panel on the wall with exposed wires up in the attic. And that's a bedroom. There's a separate pool house that has two fold-out couches. That's a bedroom. There's a pool in the backyard, and I'm pretty sure there's no alarm on there. And as Elliot Lamb just told you, we have seen small children out on the dock. There's gonna be a tragedy. Some kid's gonna drown. And the only thing out there protecting those kids from the dock who cannot yet read is a sign that says, "Swim at your own risk." Does that make sense? Are we serving the public interest by allowing small children to get out there and drown or worse? I don't think so. Now, obviously, I'm not happy about having that next to me. But if it was run properly, I think, you know, I'd just put up with it. I would tell you, my tax assessed value on my home went up and my taxes went up $1,000 last year. I would be surprised if I sold that house, if it would carry the same value it did before there was a VRBO next to it. I would be surprised. So I would ask you again to listen to the comments of Mr. Johnson. If you're gonna go through with this, narrow down the scope of the zoning. Don't change zoning laws that protect everybody in this room. And I would also ask you to look carefully at how we evaluate and permit these facilities and make sure they're safe. Make sure there's an adequate way for neighbors to not have to be peace officers and could get redressed when somebody's acting out of turn. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. Anyone else over here want to speak? I think I had somebody else.
Hi, guys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for allowing me this opportunity. I have prepared a statement, and it won't take me very long to say the things I want to say. My name is Glenn Clements, and my wife and I retired and moved to LaGrange about two and a half years ago. And we chose LaGrange for a couple of reasons. A small-town atmosphere that we all enjoy. The diverse cultural heritage that this city has. The thriving arts community that we found unaware of until we got here, quite frankly. The established medical facilities that we have here. I have a couple of issues and I needed to find a place that could take care of those issues. And more importantly, the established neighborhoods that are in here. We're the type of people that just don't move into a town and take what the town has to offer. We do the very best we can to give back to that town. As an example, we've been here two and a half years. We're very active with the First Presbyterian Church of LaGrange, the LaGrange Art Museum, LaGrange Symphony Orchestra Guild, the LaGrange Rotary, the Visual Arts Alliance of LaGrange. We're members of Hills and Dales and a bunch of other things. So we're not here just enjoying what the city has to offer. We're trying to pay back as much as we can. This was to be our forever home, our forever retirement home. However, after reading some of the things in the ordinance and doing a lot of digging into this and what's going on around the country and around the world with short-term rentals, I'm starting to question why I made that decision. And I hope it's the right decision still. LaGrange has a 20-year comprehensive plan that some of you are involved in developing. It's from 2021 to 2041. It's a ton of pages. That's half of it. My printer ran out of ink before I could finish printing the rest of it. So anything I say today will be documented with the, actually, that's the UDO, excuse me. The LaGrange Comprehensive Plan is here, which I have a whole copy of if anyone needs that. The Comprehensive Plan established community goals and policies. That was the design of it. The city hired a group to do that. Many of the goals were built around a community objective. That objective was sense of place. People like to know where they are, where they're living, and their community that they're living in. The interesting thing about, just this one page I pulled out of that plan, which deals with the neighborhood and where I live, and it goes into what the land use is for and the development strategies for that development. We're in an established neighborhood. The neighborhood's 85 years, or 75 years old, I guess. And one of the development strategies says to promote the use of neighborhood associations and neighborhood watch groups. That's kind of interesting when you're dealing with, you're not gonna know your neighbors if there's a short-term rental. And I'm not here to talk about the problem child that's in the neighborhood. I wanted to look at this at a much broader scope. You know, it talks about maintaining sidewalks in the community. And we have the thread that runs through our neighborhood. It's a very great place to live. There's one thing I'm sure many of you are aware of when it talks about neighborhood associations. The state of Georgia permitted a couple of years back to establish something called a POA. It's not a homeowner's association. It's a property owner's association. And unlike a homeowner's association, you could have, you have to get approval to paint your door. POAs are much more narrow in scope. And they can be established within an HOA or can be established on their own. I could have 20 houses on my neighborhood. And if I got those 20 people to assign a very limited scope for our POA. Let's say that scope is you cannot lease your house for anything less than 12 months. You allow associations to have HOAs. Says it in your ordinance that your ordinance does not supersede the HOA policies, which would be true for POA also. So I could actually prevent a short-term rental on my street just by going down and getting 10 people on each side of me. And then 10 people are next to them, and the 1,000-feet regulation you have in here could turn into a nightmare just trying to control wealth. Yeah, they can have it. No, they can't have it. We're talking about residential areas here. We're not talking about a commercial environment. You know, some of the things that this plan specifically outlines, one of the goals was to promote economic expansion and quality development. And the policy was to maintain downtown LaGrange and Lafayette Square as the economic and social focal point of that development. That's where your short-term rental should be. Wouldn't have been there because people are there coming in to enjoy that town. Maybe they should be out at West Point Lake where it's a vacation environment all the time. The city is to encourage growth and redevelopment closer to the civic center. This is not my thoughts, guys. This is your thoughts. This is what you said when you developed this back in, I'm assuming, 2021. The number-two goal that's established in here was to manage the land use, infrastructure, and resources efficiently and sensitively. The policy that was to establish is to utilize the existing infrastructure when promoting new businesses. Going into an existing neighborhood, I don't care if it's my neighborhood or your neighborhood. Does it make really sense? I'm just having trouble understanding the logic behind it. And I'm not talking about the 12 or 15 or whatever the number is that we have existing. I'm talking about the number that it could be. There's a development here in town. They have an HOA. But their HOA did not establish any requirements for how long you have to lease your house. Well, a company from Atlanta just went in, bought a lot there. And their sole purpose of that company is to develop short-term rentals. That's just number one that I know of. I don't know if there are any others. And this is a pretty significant neighborhood. You know, this goes on and on and on that we have established a plan as to how we develop our city. And we're not following the plan, whatever it costs us to do. our city, and we're not following the plan that whatever it costs us to do to follow. And then we developed, now I can get to your UDO, which is half of the UDO. And this UDO, as I understand it, is to work in conjunction with the plan to try to set a path that our city should be going into. They conflict each other in several different places. Now, I've got some specifics here. The first three pages of the document that I had, this is not the document, but the first one I had a copy of, which was much shorter than this, it mentioned the word business eight different times. So I don't think there's any question that what you're allowing is a business to get established, and you're putting that business in a residential zone. I don't know how else you can paint that pig. That's just the way it is, unless I'm missing something on it. The other thing that's kind of interesting, how can a business allowed to operate a residential neighborhood? And additionally, part of this document here, Section V15-9 says, and I quote, "A unified development plans are permitted in all zoning districts except ESR, SUDSR, and TN-DR." I live in a zoning district, USR. So I got one thing saying you can't do it, and they have another thing saying you can do it. Now, this is way deep into this pile here, but I'm sure no one here in this whole room has read this except for me. My questions to the city really are this. What authority gives the city to make a zoning change and put a business into a residential area? You can probably answer that for me. I don't know, but as Bob Johnson said, there's procedures that you already have established if you're going to change the zone that I don't think has been affected. My recommendation, similar to Bob's, is to slow down and look at the bigger picture, as many cities are wishing they had done now. I just got back from Greensboro, North Carolina. I was right behind the storm last week, and we had an RBO, a short-term rental there. And I, obviously, I've done a lot of research on this, so our first thing I wanted to do was to find out what the policy of the city was. And so I got on my phone and pulled out that policy. Interestingly enough, they said that the owner of the property has to be there if it's a short-term rental, has to live in the house. I don't think there's anybody in this room, if you have a neighbor, that wants to turn their house into a short-term rental, as long as they're there, that's going to have a problem with them. I don't know if, I certainly wouldn't. We're talking about investors coming into this city, not Grandma wanting to rent a room out because she needs a couple of extra bucks that month. That's not what we're talking about. That's not the direction of this. Airbnb is owned by a major corporation. VRBO is owned by a major corporation.
Bob, you did it. What was the total revenue?
That's with a B? With a B. That's $800 billion. If you look at many of these policies that were written for these various cities, some of which we have looked at, guess where they came from? From the website of the Airbnb. These people are concerned about what's going on with this whole industry because cities are trying to get out of it, to the point where they just announced that they're seeing revenues drop on the short-term rentals, so what are they doing? They're getting into the long-term rental business, which makes all the sense in the world. If I were running the company, I'd be doing exactly the same thing. So with all of that, you know, short-term rentals are investments. I think we ought to put them where they should be. They should be going into the downtown area. They should not be affecting lower-income parts of town that will come in and buy up a place, turn it into a short-term rental, and then all of a sudden the neighborhood's gone to hell. Let's think this through a little bit more than what we're talking about, and I'm not talking about the party outs. That's just the tip of the iceberg for this thing. If anybody wants any of the documentation on the facts that I've made, I got it right here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clements. Anyone else want to speak? Yes.
My name's Steve Pelham, 860 Pony Woods Drive. I live in an SUR, family residential zoning, not a commercial zone. Moved there, as many of you do, for the neighborhood, and in some cases, for the decades that some of our families have lived in these neighborhoods. This issue is not about rezoning, as been mentioned earlier. It's about an ordinance, but it's a residential neighborhood, and you are rezoning without calling it rezoning. Just bring in business to our neighborhood. If it's going to be a rental today, what is it next? What's that slippery slope? And I guess one of the things that really bothers me is I've yet to hear from one of the you council members or from the city. Why? Is it $500 annually per house for tax that you're going to get from a hotel tax? If that's the case, in some of the neighborhoods, we'll pass the hat, we'll help out, city. What is the compelling reason that you're saying that we've got to change, without calling it rezoning, an ordinance to bring in commercial operations to our neighborhoods? Some cities have been successful with it, apparently, and they're changing their course. For some reason, we decided, the verbiage that's in the package is going to be read later on, is from Fairburn. What do we have in common with Fairburn? People aren't moving to Fairburn, they're moving to La Grange, Georgia, and we're bringing commercial businesses into our neighborhoods. Austin, Athens, Augusta, they're trying to re-lit in, except for maybe eight weekends a year in Athens. They've gone too far with it, and we're opening it up. The proposed ordinance puts the policing on the neighbors. Really? You've heard from some of the other folks earlier. Is that what we're wanting to do? I got news for you. If this passes, it will be the police that are called, and more than likely, four to seven of you will be in that same text message every single time. It's our neighborhood. That's what we're supposed to do. You know, it's interesting that we have a lot of nice water tanks around this town, and we've been forever proud of Smart Moves La Grange, whether it be business or for families. If we're going to change it, instead of Smart Moves, should it be Short Visit? We don't want to be that community. We want to be that family-driven place for business, for infrastructure, and for families. So what is your rationale for pushing this? I say that rhetorically. I'd like to ask all of you, and I don't think you have a set reason. And it's in some of your neighborhoods, all across town. So remember, this is a place that we call home, and please don't rezone it unless you're going to actually rezone it, and then that's a bigger discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pelham. Got anyone else want to speak against short-term rental? Nobody? If I got anybody that wants to speak for short-term rental? No one? All right, we'll call this public hearing closed. There will be, well, I got Mr. Costel, I got him, want to make a few comments. There will be no action on this tonight. The council will take all what we've heard, and we'll discuss it more in depth in two weeks from now, potentially vote.
Is the council allowed to convene a public hearing?
I think, yeah, I think so. Let's let Mr. Costel speak, and then we'll, if council's got anything to say, yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Consistent with our discussion this morning during the work session, I've been asked to summarize the 12-page draft short-term rental ordinance. Now, to do it justice and summarize it with any degree of brevity is, because it's going to be extremely challenging, but I'll do my best to accomplish that. As you certainly recall, currently, we have no short-term regulations in place within the city of La Grange, and this is an attempt to address that. You know, staff meticulously, methodically evaluated what we believe are model ordinances as currently in place in the city of Noonan, city of Auburn, city of Rome, city of Fairburn, city of Swanee, Peachtree City, city of Griffin, Troup County, and Hall County. Staff intentionally sought feedback from both the police and fire department while drafting this ordinance. We specifically monitored proposed legislation at the Georgia General Assembly. We sought feedback from members of our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals, which were indeed public hearings improperly advertised, as held on June 10 of this year and again on August 12 of this year. Staff and elected officials alike genuinely considered community feedback that had been provided throughout this process dating back to at least March 25 of this year, while keeping in mind that as a city, we currently have, and although it hasn't been demonstrated here tonight, roughly an equal number of individuals and groups in our community who either support or oppose any type of short-term rental legislation. Now for the ordinance highlights. We specifically define what a short-term rental is. We established what has been alluded to earlier as a local point of contact, which is the contact person shall be required to respond to complaints about activity of a short-term rental 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and respond to the location after being notified within one hour. We require a responsible person to physically occupy each short-term rental whenever it is rented, and that's defined as an occupant of a short-term rental who is at least 25 years of age and is legally responsible for ensuring that all occupants of the short-term rental comply with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations pertaining to the use and occupancy of the subject's short-term rental. As was also alluded to previously, the recommendation in this draft ordinance is to permit short-term rentals exclusively within four zoning designations, with those being estate, single-family residential, suburban residential, traditional neighborhood residential, and, I'm sorry, downtown mixed use. Additionally, short-term rentals would be limited to single-family detached homes unless they're located within our downtown zoning district. Short-term rentals, once again, will be required to be separated by a minimum distance of 1,000 feet, as measured from property line to property line, with the exception of those located downtown. This draft ordinance would establish permitting requirements and inspection requirements. These inspections would be conducted by our building inspectors and fire marshal before any permit could potentially be issued, and each short-term rental must meet all applicable international residential code regulations, international building code regulations, and all international fire code regulations. This proposed draft also includes a requirement for the installation of external cameras and the fact that they shall be installed at each point of entry into the short-term rental, and that the video footage be retained for a minimum period of 30 days to be used for investigative purposes should complaints be received. This draft ordinance establishes a maximum number of occupants, which shall consist of two occupants per bedroom plus no more than five children under the age of 12. As far as parking, which was mentioned as a concern a short time ago, this ordinance addresses just that. It requires, it permits no more than one vehicle per bedroom, as well as the fact that no vehicles of any type shall be parked on grass, dirt, or on the public right-of-way except in designated parking places or spaces in front of the property. This draft ordinance establishes quiet hours to be observed between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. It requires that the operator of a short-term rental obtain proof of liability insurance in a minimum amount of $500,000, acknowledging that the property is being used and operated as a short-term rental. This draft ordinance requires that a letter be mailed to the surrounding property owners located within 500 feet, once again, as measured from property line to property line, of the proposed short-term rental, notifying them that a short-term rental permit application is being submitted, and providing them with the name of a person who will be available for contact 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This draft ordinance establishes an annual permit renewal process. It requires the owner to submit timely hotel-motel tax to the city, and it establishes permit revocation processes.
Thank you, Mr. Costel.
Thank you.
Councilman Gasson, you got something you want to?
Yeah, and I appreciate everyone coming out to voice their concerns on this issue, and I am truly concerned about it. I just want to just, I just want people to remember that they need to be grateful and thankful for the consideration that this council is giving to your community to even enact an ordinance to try to protect you. And I say that in all sincerity because this is not about, in my opinion, short-term rentals. It's about short-term memory. Hammett Line, Bell Line. There are several communities that were set up in the city as commercial enterprises where mail did not even come to people's homes. They came to a house, a store, that was owned by somebody of a different color, and these were their Negroes. And that was a commercial business. The population got greater, and they started to spread out to segregated communities. I live on Troup Street. Back in 1965, it was all white. It was a segregated community. I think the first black man bought a home over there in 1977. The rest of the houses became rentals. Again, business. These were turned into businesses. Bible says, "What you do unto the least of us," I've done it to, you have done it to us all. What is happening in your community is no different than what happened in any other community of color in the city or lesser means in this city. It's just now, it's crossing the railroad tracks. We at least are considering your pleas and your cries in creating and drafting an ordinance to try to protect you, and we're doing our very best. I can't say I'm going to vote for it, can't say I'm going to vote against it, but I just want to remind people, the people I represent have always had commercial businesses next to them. Most of them illegal. And the profiteers from it were local citizens who made money off of it. So I just want to remind you, this is not about short-term rentals. This is about short-term memory. We're trying to protect you the best way we can. I'm willing to listen to everyone's concerns, but please keep in mind, there's a whole section of the city that has been through exactly what you're going through. Thank you.
Any other council? I think you got one, Wes. Dr. Johnson, so you're the one that only bothered by police reports and still had to file the police and stuff. Are you the only one that's had to do that? Or?
Sure, I thought I could tell. Dr. Guy, I'm sorry, sorry about that, sir.
I don't know about police. So there has been other people?
Oh, I think, I think most, yeah, I think there's been quite a few that has called.
And all that's documented by Chief Police Department.
You can't get a house, can you? Yes. The charge, yeah, that's charged. So you're a documentation for sure.
Okay. If you've got anything you want to add. Again, thank y'all for participating in your community. It goes a long way, and that's why we have the public hearing, is so we can get the public input. The council will discuss it at further date, and we won't take any action tonight. We will be reading, the first reading of the ordinances, but there will not be any action, so. You can hang around and hear the reading, or you can go either way you want to do it. We're going to move on now. City manager, if you're clear.
Couple items. One that's left off the agenda.
Hang on just a second. Just let everybody, let it be out.
First time we discussed it at work session, apologize that I'm on the agenda tonight, but we talked about Street B, which is off of SR 109, and we were requesting that the city council authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a warranty deed to grant a section of roadway to heirloom development for future use as a driveway into a facility that they are going to be building. Yeah, y'all remember that. Yeah, y'all remember that.
Can I entertain a motion to?
Motion to allow the city members?
The mayor and city clerk.
The mayor and the city clerk to engage in, take a kind of warranty deed.
Okay, got a motion, got a second. All in favor? All opposed, same?
Second item, we also discussed this morning about declaring item surplus at the recycling center so that we can begin the transition to Amways doing the recycling for the city, and there'll certainly be a transition period. We'll make sure and communicate to the public and get their aware of what's going on. You've got a list of the items here, and at Mason's request, we found out it wasn't 2009, Bob's Cat Skid steer, that both factors said it's not in the greatest of shape, so it's okay down here as well. And we're asking that you declare these items surplus, and we would take steel bands on these items, and Amways would certainly be able to bid on them if they choose.
Can I get a motion to declare these items surplus? Motion to declare these items surplus.
Second, I have motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, same? That's my report, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to first readings. Amend first reading ordinance to amend the alcoholic beverage ordinance in order to provide a minimum distance between a package store, a private residence, or daycare facility.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the COVID city to amend the alcoholic beverages ordinance in order to provide a minimum distance between a package store, daycare, and a private residence to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date for other purposes.
Second reading order, not second reading order, but second first reading order, that's right. To modify zoning, clarify classifications in which package stores are permitted use.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the COVID city to amend the zoning ordinance of the city in order to modify zoning classifications in which package stores are a permitted use to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And the third first reading, to rezon 2.2 acres on Williams Street from CPGI to TN-DASH.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the COVID city to amend zoning happen ordinances to the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located on Williams Street and owned by Lick D Building Group to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And the final first reading, short-term rental ordinance. An ordinance, the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the COVID city, semi-colon to amend Chapter 30-5 in order to define and regulate short-term rentals, to provide definitions, to impose distance requirements, to create and outline requirements for permits and inspections, to require operational requirements and conditions, to provide revocation and penalties, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
All right, we'll move on to our closing comments. Ms. Katie Bancho.
Yes, sir. The good news for tonight, while our city escaped relatively unscathed from hurricane, the recent hurricane, our community continues to give back to those communities who suffered damage by the storm. The city did have a crew that spent more than a week in Douglas, Georgia, helping that community who was hit really hard by the storm. That was down in Coffee County. They got their power back on, led by Lenwood Mitchell. We had a line crew, tree trimming crew, boring crew that helped with the recovery effort. They were headed back home earlier today. And then also, the public is invited to participate in a community-wide donation drive for storm victims in South Georgia. That's going to happen this Friday, October 11th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Western Heights Baptist Church on West Point Road. It's a collaborative effort led by EMA Director Zach Steele with the city of La Grange, Troup County, West Point, and Hawkins Mill. Hope to see everybody there.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.